Welcome, everyone. If everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're going to start off with the Black History Month performances by three of our high school students. I'm sorry, I'm going to say the names. I may mess them up. Actually, I most positively will mess them up. Arbraza Castellon, did I kill that one? Are they here? No? Kiara Ramirez? No? Deoni Cademos? How much, how badly did I destroy your name? She's like, pretty badly. How's your name?
Hi, my name is Duney Cadens.
Oh, boy. Sorry.
No, you're good. It happens. Today, I will cite a poem that I made called "Oh, To Black Joy." A student would ask me, "How would you describe black joy?" Stereotypically, I would say, "Black joy would taste like beans, greens, potatoes, tomatoes, lambs, rams, maws, chicken, turkey, you know, you name it." Black joy would sound like The Chacha Slide, TLC, Look at Me Now by Chris Brown. There are churches on Sunday. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Black joy would look like wigs, box braids, different type of melanin, 3A to 4C hair types within broken combs and brushes in Friday 1 and 2. Black joy would smell like hot combs, fried chicken, hairspray gel, old lady church candies. Sometimes they'd be hitting, though. Black cults, but besides all of these overpowering stereotypes, mainly because they are true, black culture and black joy feels like a community that is related, whether it's family or not. It feels like a family, and in a family, there will be ups and downs and closer bonds than others. In regards, there is loyalty somewhere, and if there is loyalty, there is trust around the corner. And if there is trust and loyalty, there is love, black love. There's a difference. You'll know when we feel it.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us. That was beautiful. So the other two are not here. Okay, we'll move on to the school committee minutes and approve for minutes of the organizational meeting on January 4th and the regular school committee meeting on the 4th in enclosure A. We will move on to the motion. I need a motion to move these. Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to public comment. Is there anyone here that has public comment? And if you do, and if you need an interpreter, could you let us know? No public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the report of the superintendent of schools. Elmi is actually joining us via Zoom today.
Thank you so much. I hope everyone can hear me. Okay. So for what Mr. Delaney is not here tonight, so I'm going to ask Mr. Malik Hussein to go over the success indicators.
Good evening, everyone. While I plug in, I'll just say I'm going to do my best to fill Adam's shoes for a little bit. I'll also add that I'm going to try to stay on script, and for those who know me, know that they're smiling right now.
Just bear with us for a couple of seconds.
Okay, yeah, if we can't get the source going, if anybody didn't get a printout, I'd be happy to pass out a printout if you want to raise your hand, if anybody would like to read along. So we'll start with indicator 2. As you go down the line through the grades, what your notices compared to last month, all of our grade levels have improved with the exception of grade 7, grade 8, grade 10, and grade 11 in regards to our daily attendance rate. Indicator 10, which is the high school dropout rate, which we're looking for, the high school dropout rate to decrease by 2% per year. As compared to this point in the year, in last year, we have almost doubled the amount of dropouts, 94, compared to 50 at this point, in this, at this time last year. If you go down to the programmatic breakdown, our dropout rates continue to come from our ELL population, the majority being foundational Ls of the 36 January dropouts. 35 are listed as location unknown with one registering with Job Corps. I'll make a note there, this number's actually improved over the past three years, however. If we go to the appendices here, we're looking at mobility throughout the district, at the grade levels. We've had a total of 92 enrollments in January with 90 students leaving. For the ELC, 7 in, 5 out at the elementary school level, at the complex, 24 in and 20 out. For middle schools, 28 in, 16 out. And for the high school, 39, sorry, 33 in and 49 out. Finally, our CHS failing grades. For our failing grades measure, our 9th graders have increased from 37.9% to 48.5%. Failing with the largest numbers, that is, excuse me, that large number comes from failing at least one grade, I mean, yeah, one course. Our 10th graders increased from 41.2% to 49.3% failing with the largest numbers failing just one grade only. That includes, that concludes the, our indicators of success. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Just know if I don't have any answers for you, I'd be happy to get them for you.
Do you want to have any questions?
I have a question on page 4 in the failing grades. I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly.
Yep.
So there were 91 students who are failing exactly one grade, not...
Yeah, that's correct.
And then 48.5% of all grade 9 students were failing one or more, had, were failing one or more classes.
Yeah, when you add up, when you add those numbers up, they look to be like 247, which is going to put us at 48.5% out of the 501.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I also have a question. I don't know, I'm having a hard time hearing, but did you mention where the other grades are, grades 11 and 12?
I don't have these present on the information that Adam provided to me as part of the indicator, so I'm unsure if grades 11 and 12 are actually...
If I can chime in, the reason why we track 9th and 10th grades specifically is because we know that 9th grade, if our students get behind in 9th grade, they're more at risk to drop out. And the data tells us that 9th grade is a pivotal grade in trajectory of dropout. So that's why we want to catch the students that are failing. And 10th grade is an MCAS grade. One of the reasons, as we track this data, so that we can also intervene. So the kids that are failing classes, we can track early and make sure that they're getting the credit recovery that they need and that their schedules are being, are made so that way they're getting into the classes that they need to get into to make up the credits. And so that's why we really monitor grade 9 and grade 10 because we're setting our, if our kids don't start catching up credits in 9th grade and 10th grade, they start, they fall behind towards graduation. And so we have a dashboard where we track all of our senior students, and we don't track it here, but we have internal system where we track all of our seniors and where they are, are they on target to graduation? And then, like, right now, we have offering Saturday School. We have Acceleration Academies in February break. We have credit recovery during the day, so we are constantly looking at ways where we can help the students that we've identified to get caught up.
Thank you, Dr. Veda.
Yeah, I'll just add one more thing in as well. You know, we're embarking on a CHS high school reimagination, and I think, you know, this work that we'll be doing over the next handful of years will be really designed to support these numbers and make sure that we're providing our kids with the education that they need, but also supporting them in their endeavors to be successful postgraduate when they finish CHS. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Malik. You did a great job.
Thank you, Dr. Veda.
Sure, and now our student representatives, they, I'm sure they have information to share with us.
Tess, this is where, okay. Good evening, members of this Chelsea School Committee. In the past couple of weeks, we have released a survey to Chelsea High students, surveying them about their personal experience at the high school. Currently, we have been advertising, talking to students during lunches and hallway transitions to gain their feedback. As of now, we have over 250 responses from all grades. We will be closing the survey on February 15th and then having a meeting to analyze the data. We're excited to show our findings to you guys in the next meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be back here. I'm going to start my update off with talking about the athletics going on at Chelsea High. First and foremost, I want to celebrate Girls and Women's National Sports Day. Having an athletic director who's heavily involved in sports, and she's a woman, is astonishing, especially from a male playing football and seeing a woman play in football as well, and she's amazing. Like, she won so many titles. She plays at Foxborough. Like, it's baffling how, like, important it is to have those people in those positions. Also, the track season came to an end, and I would like to congratulate the girls for coming in third and the boys coming in fifth and the seven athletes who made states. We have seven students who made the Division III state meets, so that is wonderful to have those students compete on a statewide level. Yesterday, we had our city manager, Fidel Martas, come speak at the Chelsea High students about his role as city manager. And that's also important because not a lot of students know that Chelsea has a city manager. Not a lot of people know what the difference is between a city manager and a mayor. So it's important that we have him come there and teach our students what a city manager does and what his role is here in Chelsea. I would also like to give a huge shout out to our school's counselors. It is National Counselors Week as well, and our counselors at Chelsea High, they're the best. I mean, you think about all the seniors that have to deal with their college applications. The counselors got to deal with everyone that they got in all of their college applications. Like, if the student is stressed, most likely your counselor is a little stressed, too. And so just a huge shout out, special shout out to my counselor, Mr. Mansfield. He works magic. He's always coming in on the crunch of time, so just a huge shout out to all our counselors, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jav and Jimmy. The next, we'll move on to our personnel report, which is in the enclosures. And this year, for this report, we've hired 26% Caucasian, 67% Hispanic, 0% Black, and 7% Asian Pacific Islander. And then I'm going to move on to enclosure C, which is our enrollment report. And as of, as of this week, we have 6,262 students in our schools. I would like to commend both of these reports to the record. Thank you so much. And that concludes my portion of the report.
Can I get a motion to move the subcommittee meetings, minutes? Minutes?
A motion to commend both reports in enclosure B, C, and the subcommittee minutes?
Second.
And now we'll move on to new business?
May I make a motion to take Jimmy Marino's communication out of order so that we can read it before it comes up on the...
We were going to have him read it after, when we read the, when we read the resolution, before we took the vote.
Before we vote?
Yes, before we vote. Okay? But thank you. So we'll move on to new business, and we'll start off with our first item, which is consideration in action to accept the donation of STEM and ELA books from the Cambridge School of Western in the amount of approximately $750. The Cambridge School of Western has generously offered a donation of gently-used books for STEM and ELA. The donation is valued at approximately $750 and will be used by the COA. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, motion carries. We move on to our next item, which is consideration in action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2023, 2024 for hourly and salary wages. The district is proposing to increase the hourly rates for multiple positions to acknowledge a 51 cent increase in the city's living wage for 2024 and to keep district positions competitive within the local labor market. The action also creates a new part-time limited-duration project manager position to assist the new initiatives or projects that are not academic in nature and a transfer, a translator certified, which will allow the district to acknowledge the skills brought by a candidate who is certified in interpretation. The ranges for classification D and E are recommended for change to address market conditions. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Nine in the affirmative, motion passes. The next, before we read off the next item, Dr. Veda would like to make a comment. Elmi?
Thank you. I'm real excited about the next item. And so before you do, take a vote, I would like to read first, congratulate Michelle Martinello for doing, for just doing an amazing job and really being the top choice for all of us for the next, the next Assistant Superintendent in light of Mr. Delaney leaving to become Superintendent in Melrose. And while we're sad to see Mr. Delaney move, we're thrilled to have such a wonderful replacement in Ms. Martinello. And so I just want to read her bio. Ms. Martinello has served as the principal of the Eugene Wright Middle School since 2015. And as part of the Wright team, she has led many initiatives that have helped contribute to the school's growth, both academically and culturally. She leads by centering relationships and connections in her work, truly valuing every student and staff member's name, strength, and story. Prior to assuming the principalship at the Wright, Ms. Martinello served as an assistant principal, math coach, math interventionist, and sis-grade teacher. She has served 20 years with the Chelsea Public Schools. 19 of these years have been at the Wright, and her first year was at Clark Avenue. Michelle has earned her Bachelor's of Science in elementary education and a Master's of Art in Teaching Middle School Mathematics from Salem State University. In 2014, she completed a fellowship with the National Institute of School Leaders and is currently an Influence 100 Fellow. Michelle grew up splitting her time between her weekends at her grandparents in Chelsea and in Saugus. Michelle's family were born and raised in Chelsea. Her parents, Chelsea High School graduates. She has deep love for the community that began when she was a child. She is passionate, she's a passionate advocate for public education and truly loves our students and families. A proud educator introduced to Chelsea Public Schools by her mother, Joanne, who taught over 30 years in the system herself. Ms. Martinello is also a mom of three children, Makaya, Brandon, and Lorenzo. So I would just like to recommend Ms. Martinello as the next Assistant Superintendent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elmi. Consideration in action to move to accept the terms and conditions in the employment contract for Assistant Superintendent Michelle Martinello in attachment enclosure G. The Human Resources Subcommittee has reviewed and moved forward the superintendent's recommendation after hiring committee interviewed candidates. The Assistant Superintendent position will be vacant on July 1st, 2024. The school committee sets compensation for Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 59. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome. Now we're moving on to our next item. Vice Chair Cabral moves to accept the resolution in support of the H4199 in Act Relative to Personnel Finance Literacy. The Chelsea School Committee hereby endorses and supports the passage of the H4199 in Act Relative to Personal Financial Literacy, filed by Representative Ryan Hamilton and will work to promote and enhance personal finance education with the Chelsea Public Schools through the establishment of personal finance course requirement, requirement for at least one half of one semester or equivalent length. Ms. Cabral, you had something, you wanted to say something?
Yep, and then I'll turn it over to Jimmy in just one moment. Before we vote, I just wanted to share some of my rationale for this resolution. The summer after I graduated Chelsea High, I worked at a retail store and was advised by my older brother to open up a Roth IRA, a retirement plan, and to start to save for college expenses. This was one of the first steps that I took to develop my own generational wealth. And looking back, I realized that it was a privilege to have older siblings that could offer that financial literacy and that financial advice to think about how I could critically think about how to empower myself and to be financially free. This vital information around financial literacy no longer needs to be limited to a few. With H4119, as it would require every student in the state of Massachusetts to take one personal finance class before they graduate and provide districts with the necessary support to implement this. I want to thank all the student advocates that are rooting for formidable and comprehensive financial literacy courses that would be accessible to all high schoolers across the state of Mass. To my school committee members, we're developing 21st century learners who need necessary skills and knowledge about budgeting, high-yield savings, retirement plans, homeownership, and investing, to name a few. I want to thank you all for your support in this resolution. I encourage those that are with us in person today and those joining us remotely to call your state representatives and senators to support H4119, an Act Relative to Personal Financial Literacy. I'm grateful to be part of a district that continues to empower students, families, and community through financial literacy. I'll turn it over to Jimmy Marino to share his memo.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Vice Chair. I'm excited to update you all on the progress I made with H419, an Act Relative to Personal Financial Literacy sponsored by State Representative Brian Hamilton. Recently, I provided a detailed memo explaining why endorsing this legislation would benefit Chelsea, supported by research findings. I want to give you all a brief overview emphasizing the importance for our community. This legislation aims to enhance personal financial education statewide, receiving support from various organizations, including the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, where I serve as the Vice Chair on the Executive Board. At the Joint Committee on Education's recent hearing, there was strong support for the bill from dozens of student representatives, community members, elected officials, including student representatives Josue Castellón, Javin Diaz, State Representative Judith Garcia, City Councilors Kelly Garcia and Melinda Vega, and Vice Chair Kathy Cabral. Currently, the bill has over 20 co-sponsors. We're really excited about that. My passion for this bill is very personal. My parents, Elihu and Delmi, immigrated to the United States from El Salvador, dreaming of escaping poverty and creating a better future for our family. However, when they immigrated here, they faced similar challenges facing financial instability, struggling with rent payments, and creating a college for my sister and I. Their story is one of a persistent cycle, a cycle that they lacked the knowledge to break. As I enter my college journey, I'm very unfamiliar with financial literacy topics like credit building, loan acquisition, and repayment. 25 other states in the United States and almost 20 school districts here in Massachusetts have learned how taking financial literacy early on builds the knowledge and breaks the cycles of financial hardship that have persisted for generations. If this bill passes, it would ensure that every student in the Commonwealth takes at least one course in personal finance before graduating. This would be done through the personal financial course graduation requirement for every student in the state taken throughout high school. Furthermore, it would be financially supported by the establishment of the Financial Literacy Trust Fund, which would provide equitable funding to districts, including underserved communities like Chelsea and districts with high concentrations of economically disadvantaged students for professional development, curriculum development, and other uses for expanding financial literacy education. I was outlined in the bill, the standalone course would comprehensively cover essential topics such as earning, spending, saving income, filling out taxes, investing, and much more. As a student representative, I regularly engage with Chelsea High students, and a reoccurring concern always is the challenge students face between prioritizing AP classes or honor courses rather than a financial literacy course. Many don't really recognize the importance of financial literacy and opt out, only realizing its significance later on. Many don't really recognize the importance of financial literacy and opt out, only realizing its significance later on. This delayed awareness contributes to the constant cycles of poverty we face. Supporting this bill is an opportunity to empower our students, break the cycle, and ensure everyone has the vital skills we need to be successful after high school. It's a proactive approach to informed decision-making. Supporting this resolution tonight not only aligns with Chelsea Public Schools' mission, but also strategically positions Chelsea to be competitive in applying for a range of grants and funding opportunities. State and federal agencies, along with private organizations, are increasingly acknowledging the significance of financial literacy education. Chelsea's commitment to this cause will definitely capture their attention. Notably, private organizations such as Next Gen Personal Finance have already invested in Massachusetts. Last year, they collaborated with the state, contributing over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for educator professional development. As part of this initiative, teachers received five-hundred-dollar stipends and underwent training in financial literacy education at Bridgewater State University during the summer. I look forward to collaborating with the committee and my peers in promoting economic equality and security, beginning in the classroom by expanding financial literacy education for students of Chelsea and beyond. Thank you.
Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I just want to thank the student representatives for bringing this to our attention. And I also want to recognize you all for speaking up at the State House in the hearing for this bill. I think that our role as school committee, a very important part of our role as school committee members is to advocate for things at the state level that affect our school here in Chelsea Public Schools. So I just want to recognize you guys and thank you, everyone who's making this resolution possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, motion carries.
Nine in affirmative, motion carries. Moving on to our next item. Consideration in action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve overnight an out-of-state field trip to the New Balance Indoor Track Nationals at the Armory in New York, New York City from two, February twenty-ninth to March third, two thousand and twenty-four, for three students and two chaperones. Three students, three student athletes have qualified for the Nationals for indoor track. Nationals are held at the New York Armory, and the students will compete over the course of four days. Out-of-state field trips must be approved by the school committee. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan? Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
And Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, motion carries.
Nine in affirmative, motion carries. Good luck. We move on to the next item, which is consideration in action to approve a homeschooling petition for a Chelsea family. The Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the petition has met the requirements of the Chelsea Public School homeschooling policy. All homeschooling proposals must be approved by school committee. Roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Covas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Dr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you, and that comes to nine in affirmative, motion carries. That comes to the end of our new business. Does anyone have anything they'd like to contribute, speak on? Add to?
I just want to say a comment. I just want to say thank you so much for all the personnel, teachers, and people who really doing their job and working more beyond. We know that is a lot of work, but we know that is a lot of people who has the passion and, and the really gift to take care and to give the support to other, that other students. So I really appreciate that, and I really want to say thank you to everyone that it kind of like make the difference in the schools when we have such a special group that, I mean, they're doing their work and they work very hard for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I just wanted to refer to one of the comments that was made by Javin. We, he mentioned that many of our students are applying to college, university, job opportunities, and I just want to thank and celebrate all of our students that are in this process. Many of us are the first in our families to ever accomplish this, and I just want to celebrate our students for something that's just so astounding. So shout out to all our students that are continuing their education and seeking out opportunities and giving back to a community. And if you ever want to come back and teach here, let us know.
Yes, absolutely. Yes?
I'd like to mention that there are two upcoming events next month before our next meeting. The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, CPAC, is meeting at noon at Seventy-Seven Webster on Tuesday, March fifth. And I invite, you know, all parents of kids in special education to attend these important meetings. I've been to just one so far, but I'm going to try and make more. And then that same evening on Tuesday, March fifth, Traffic and Parking Commission is meeting here in City Hall at six P.M. And there's going to be an agenda item related to shutting down the street in front of the ELC during drop-off for the buses in the morning. So if people have opinions about that, they can come and speak.
Yes?
Just want to say, happy Black History Month, and there will be a lot of opportunity for us to learn about Black history. Descendant of Black history, I mean, Black community also is involved in our Latino history. So there is a lot of opportunity, just visit our website so that we can also embrace that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. With this, we come to our end of our school committee meeting this month. Thank you so much for coming and joining us. Thank you for everyone's participation. I think that as we have to work as a team, including parents, school committee, staff, students, this has to definitely be a team effort to make this work and move forward. And I think we're doing an amazing job, and we'll, we're only going to get better. So I wish everybody a good evening and much luck. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?